Give you the honor in Jesus' precious name.
And I call it over to the Swain County Board of Commissioners for work session June 4th, 2024, 10:00 AM. Gunnar and Lucian, please, sir.
Face to colors, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Our next order of business, items up for discussion. We have the Wake, the Wake presentation, Ms. Crystal Jones.
Good morning. I have some things that I would like to give out to you all. First of all, thank you so much for allowing me to come and speak and introduce myself and introduce the organization that I work for. Let those come out to you guys. In the meantime, I'd like to introduce myself. I'm a very new face here to Swain County, but I am a native of Jackson County. I was born and raised there. And then after, when I turned seventeen, I went into the military with a parent's signature, a little permission slip, and I couldn't wait to go serve my country. I have a servant's heart from the day that I was born until even today. I love serving my country, I love serving my community. I love finding the most vulnerable and then offering my heart to them. I served six years. I was honorably discharged, and then from there, I continued my service to my community as a law enforcement officer. I served in that capacity for nine years in various organizations, three different organizations. I worked in Jackson County Sheriff's Office, and then from there, I worked in Cherokee PD. And then from there, I worked for License and Theft, and so that was a state agency. So that's me in a nutshell. And then from there, I just felt like I was being pulled somewhere else. And so I found Awake Children's Advocacy Center in Silver, North Carolina. That organization serves child abuse victims in Jackson County. And we were serving a little bit of Swain County, but at the time, Swain County children were having to go all the way to Mission to get these services, which I'll go over here in just a second. And that is a very big hardship, not only for your organizations in here, in Swain County, such as your law enforcement, your Department of Social Services, and many others to go receive these, but also for the children of Swain County. They were going all the way to Mission for those. And so when I was, when I worked there, I said, well, why don't we bring these services to Swain County? There's no sense in having these children come all the way to Mission or even just to us. We started serving them at Jackson County, and we forged really great relationships with our collaborative partners. And we said, well, why don't we bring the services to Swain County? And so that set off a mission to set up a CAC here in Swain County, and we are doing just that. So I want to give you an overview of what a children's advocacy center actually does and why it is very important to your communities. So when it starts, there is an allegation of abuse. That allegation of abuse for a child comes into your sheriff's offices, your police departments, your Department of Social Services. And once that happens, they call us and they say, hey, can we do a forensic interview, a child medical evaluation? Can you do victim advocacy and other services? So we start out with a forensic interview. The forensic interview is completed by a very specialized, trained individual. We have right now three on staff and about to hire a fourth. And so we're going to have at least one dedicated to Swain County. And that's just where our funding leaves us right now. My goal is to have two, if not three, because it's like a bird bath mentality. Once you build it, they will come. And so this forensic interview is something that is utilized in court. We stand in the gap for these children. I can also say that since we have been providing these services, you can also look this up on the news. Our prosecution rates have skyrocketed, and that is something that we are very proud of. We want to put these people who harm children away, and so they don't continue to do this. Another thing that happens right after the forensic interview is we offer this child a comprehensive medical exam. This medical exam is different than regular checkup. It is not something that can be completed at your regular pediatrician's office. These medical professionals are highly trained. They're trained at the U N C School of Medicine in Chapel Hill. They are trained to look for signs and symptoms of child abuse, but also they're trained to look for things that are possibly not. I'm not talking about spanking your child. I'm not talking about things like that, but I am talking about things that are leaving bruises, marks, and also sexual abuse that they are trained to look at. And then also, this comprehensive medical exam and this forensic interview, where they go as a team together into the courtroom, and they also stand in the gap for this child. And they also assist our law enforcement and our DSS workers in both civil and in our criminal court. And they are essential to make sure that these suspects, these defendants, do not continue to hurt children in Swain County. And it is, it is very effective. And then also, after that, there's a victim advocate. This victim advocate is the first person this child sees as soon as they come in the center. They're the friendly face. They're someone who knows everybody in Swain County. They know all of the resources, they knew who to talk to. They're the person that if, let's say, the breadwinner of the home gets plucked from that family because they're the suspect, how are we going to support this mom? How are we going to support this dad that's left in the home? So that way, they don't feel obligated to go right back into that situation. This victim advocate pulls from all of the other collaborative partners and says, okay, how are we going to support them? Things that we provide are food. We also can provide transportation and then also other resources that are in the community. We work very, very collaboratively with all of these partners. And then also, one of the other things that we have done is with mental health therapy. It's really the icing and the cherry on top, because we want these children to also heal. I will stand by my opinion on this. My opinion is not that we should just ignore all of the problems with adults, but I will say, if you want to change the drug abuse in communities, if you want to make a difference in poverty and homelessness and other social issues that are in your communities, it starts with children. I mean, if you want to move that needle the other way and make a difference, this is where it starts. It starts with children. And children who have been abused, they have a very high potential to abuse drugs, to go into poverty, to not be successful without support. And that's where we come in and stand in that gap. And so mental health counseling is so essential. We work, working, we are working also with outside agencies like Appalachian. I will say that they are very busy, and so we keep them very busy. And so one of the things that we also have done is that I've wrote some grants and I've also got some in-house counselors as well. They are based in Jackson County, but we will travel. We always bring the services to the children, that's our goal. And then whatever else that we can do, we're constantly looking for ways to improve our services and figure out how else we can support the children of Swain County, and really all children. That's our main goal. I know that was a thirty thousand foot view in like five minutes, but I wanted to be very quick and respectful of your time. Are there any questions that I can answer?
Do you coordinate with social services, son, along with the?
Absolutely.
You coordinate with all the?
Yes, absolutely.
Everything that's in existence now, you?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we work very, very closely. So also, one of the things that I forgot to mention is we have a monthly meeting. It's called a multidisciplinary team meeting. And so we sit down at the table with DSS, with the Department of Social Services, with law enforcement, with mental health, with our doctors, with all of the staff on Awake, and with everybody who has a hand in helping these cases. And we have a list that we go through, the new cases, the review cases, the prosecution cases. And then we also have a list at the very end of cold cases that we just might need to keep an eye on. But we hear from each of these groups of where they're at. And then all of the groups, that way, we don't allow any kid to fall through the cracks. So DSS will share their input of where they're at in their case, whether they're substantiated cases or unsubstantiated or what their plan is. We'll hear from law enforcement and what they're able to do. And if they're going to prosecute or if they're working on search warrants or if they're, whatever there is. We'll hear from the advocates. And so the advocates will say, well, I can't get ahold of Ms. Jones. I've tried to call her and call her, but I just can't get ahold of her. DSS comes in and might say, oh, she got a new phone number. Let me give you that number. Also, in your packet, you're going to see an administrative court order. That is signed by Chief Justice Ouija Wicarama, and that allows us to share information. That's based off of Statute 7B, 3100, which allows us to share information. And this administrative court order says we shall share information, and it designates all of the respective agencies that are within that. So that's where we get our confidentiality, allowability, and things like that, so. And we also have a inter-agency agreement, which is a form that is signed by all of the directors. Sheriff has signed it, the police chief has signed it, DSS Director Bree Clausen has signed it, I have signed it. All of these collaborative agencies that work together tirelessly, we've all agreed to the things that we are going to uphold and the things that we are going to do to try to save children.
I appreciate this acronym work too, by the way.
I tell you what.
We all?
Yes, sir.
We all get hung up by different organizations, agencies using these acronyms.
Yes, sir.
Makes sense to them, but to no one else.
Absolutely. I tell you what, if there's one thing I learned from the military is that there is a ton of acronyms. And so when we start talking about acronyms and things like that, people are like, what are you even saying? So we took it upon ourselves to make a little dictionary there, a little index.
You want to ask any questions, any comments? We certainly appreciate what you're doing, what you guys are doing.
Thank you.
Looking forward to, I know we're fixing to build a house.
Yes, thank you so much.
And part of that will be for Awake. And so we probably will need your help on some design criteria.
I can, I can help with that.
Yeah, I'd like to see us continue to support and encourage and work together.
I will tell you that our rates, I'd be remiss if I didn't, if I didn't talk about this. From the time we started to the time we are now, it's gone up about sixty percent, which is a huge jump. And also, the severity of the cases that we are seeing is tremendous. And I say that with a, with a heavy heart. It is, it is horrific, the child abuse cases that we are seeing in all counties, but I will also specifically say in Swain. I think that the children in Swain County truly need a special touch. I know that all of our hearts are for them. I know we all have a, a need to want to help them. And I think that I truly appreciate all of your support in this. I think that we all have a very big compassion for all the children. And so I want you to know, though, it is, it is on the rise, and we are doing everything we possibly can. I'm writing as many grants as I can to get as enough people there to, to help these babies, so.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is a scholarship, trades, community college. And I think we had started this a couple of years ago.
In the packet, there's just a work session, and it's from July 2nd that talks about, county manager's report. There were scholarship funds for trade community college. Fifty thousand was approved, and it was to work with schools to create a committee with guidelines and things of that nature. And that was where it stopped. So it's been brought back up. So it's a discussion of do we want to continue this, you know, is this going to go to set that committee, how many people, you know, just a base idea of what it will look like.
So we set aside fifty thousand? Well, I was at the awards banquet the other night, and I kept thinking, did we not set aside fifty thousand? So that's, I come back to Lottie, and I think, Ken, it's already come to Lottie. And so my, my idea is is we just, we do it and get it, the committee formed and get established and go ahead and get this thing rolling. I don't know that we've got time this year, but we can definitely have a good, get it completely ready for next year. Mr. Seale, do you have any thoughts on this?
I think that?
Come up here, please.
I think it's, it's still possible, Kevin, for that scholarship to go out. Because we, we haven't had graduation yet, and to be honest, I'm not sure what courses of study students may be entering into at Southwestern at this point. But I think that we could work with our CTE director and get that information. And if you and the commissioners wanted to pursue that, we could help put that in place through the summer. There, there obviously would need to be some for, some, some form of a, an application and maybe interview process, but we've done that multiple times as well. If that's something that you all would like for us to pursue, I'd be pleased to, to put that into action and, or at least we could begin to have some conversation and have that in place before they start their fall semester. I believe we can do that, okay?
Mr. Cherry, I believe that we need to set the committee and guidelines and everything. We need to do that before we just go ahead and do it.
I think there's wisdom in that, too. And, and if y'all wanted help with that, we have multiple scholarship groups that can help provide some, some guidelines to work from, so you could develop from there. You wouldn't have to start with a blank piece of paper then, okay? If that's what you want. Okay?
Thank you.
Yes.
I think it's a good idea to do that. And like I said, set up the, I, I feel like, to be honest with you, I use the term, I sort of feel like we just dropped the ball on that. And that's much my fault to anybody's. And we need to kind of get that started back up. I remember the conversation was about trying specifically in what, trying to help trades, if I remember correctly. I don't know if we, we still want to limit it to just that, but, but whether that would be part of the discussion, but trying to give some of our local students a little bit of a, a leg up, maybe to get to Southwestern and work and develop trade skills, those who. So I think that the process would be a good one to start. I don't know, like Mr. Seale said, I don't know if we need to re, completely reinvent the wheel, but use some guidelines that they have and, and different things for different scholarships. And we can discuss and get the ball rolling.
How many community members do they need?
That's up to you. Typically, we have anywhere. Typically, we, we have anywhere from probably three to seven. It just depends on what you want. Five's a good number. I always try to work in, with odd numbers in, in case there are voting implications. But, so I would, I would shoot for at least three. And I would recommend that, that you consider having someone from our CTE department on that as well, because they can give you background on students, okay?
So we could do CTE, the department has some other, that's one. And then we could do, maybe, I would think we could do a couple of trade guys, trade women, whoever is in a trade field already.
Yes.
So that would be three, if you could do that. And then, what, what do you guys think?
But when we set this up, were we setting it up also as a need scholarship? I mean, needs of, financial needs, I guess is what I'm trying to say, of students. Does it help? It, it, should that be part of the input? How do you do that, or is that even legal to do it there?
It, it is legal. I'll, I'll tell you that right now, identifying student need is a little bit of a challenge because, I'm going to use a, an acronym, okay, called FASFA. And the FASFA process has not been strong this year across the state for a number of reasons. I think that we would need to have conversation about, we would, how to identify what the need of the student would be and to do that accurately and fairly. That's why we've relied on FASFA, okay? But that can be accomplished, okay? Yes, sir.
I was on the board at that time, but I do think it's worthwhile. I myself started out as a trade. Southwestern Community College, got my plumbing license. Worked in the field as a plumber, still, still licensed plumber. It's worthwhile, especially to give kids who are on a fixed income or lesser income by their parents to give them a step, so.
And we're definitely needing trades. They're not just in Swain County, it's throughout the region. I mean, I, I do consulting work several different counties, and you can't find anybody. It's kind of tough right now. I actually went to, when I was younger, got out of the military, and went to trades. I went to Southwestern at night, two nights a week, drove all the way from Snowbird where I was working, two nights a week to take electrical classes under my, or my, Dave's. And so I, I know what it's like to come through that trade, so it's pretty tough. So yeah, I think it's a great idea. So maybe we can get some thought to that and maybe look at a couple more members.
Well, I think we see within our own community what's, what trade skills, trades are, are lacking in and hurting for as far as even in our county, in county employment. It'd really be nice to, I don't want, home grow, home grow your own trade skill, but I mean, that's kind of what we're trying to do with the scholarship program, is to, to give an incentive for these kids to come back as whatever our need may be, environmental health or building, whatever it might be.
I think it's a good incentive to get people back into trade. Everybody give it up? Lottie, work on that. Next up is the finance, purchasing policy updates.
So this is draft, so there are still some sections that are not complete. I should have it complete by the end of the week. And I can have Cindy, I can edit boxes or email them to you. You can review it and see if there's any changes that you want to make. I do have some other, like it says, some other updates that have been scored to deal policy and private policy and for using your own vehicle. And the policy hasn't been updated probably for, I'd say, a good eight, nine years, maybe, maybe a little longer. We just felt the need to put some things down in stone, have you guys look at it, vote on it, and just better have the county adhere to what you purchase and how you purchase it. So just want to let Lottie know if you have any changes, or you can just email me, give me a call, review it, make changes, mark it up, however you want to do it.
Like you said, this policy has been in place for some time. We're just trying to put some more defining words into that for specifics. So when it was originally brought in, it was voted and heard by the commissioner, so that's why we're bringing the changes.
Any questions on that? Just review it.
The changes are in the bold. What? There are changes in it now?
There are, it has been updated. Do you want the old policy? I can send it to you.
I've just wanted, if, it's just like the bold print stuff, does that have anything to do with any different?
Well, where it says it's empty, not, I mean, it's in progress, that is still, that has not been completed. And I will have that completed hopefully by the end of the week. No, it's just been updating as I go, but I can, I can send you the old policy if you want to see what was there.
Can you just holla at the changes?
Sure. Sure, I can do that.
I think that's what I, yeah, thank you. That's maybe what I was trying to spit out.
Yeah.
Just holla at the changes and then email them.
Yeah. Okay. I can find them, it's not too long. Is that good?
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Next up is the dispatcher contract with the town of Ruston City.
So in our meeting with the town, the joint meeting, we had a conversation about the dispatcher. They have been giving us yearly forty-two thousand, is what it was right now. There is nothing in writing that clarifies that dollar amount. Is it yearly? It's just always been just an agreement. So my question is, do we want to pursue a yearly contract that would run just like their fire contract does for us? Would be July to June each fiscal year, and we'll put a dollar amount in it, which would be salary and benefits for one dispatcher. They do dispatch more than just fire and police. They do after-hours calls, they do, you know, emergency alarms, things like that for the pumps. So there's more calls going out than what the towns realize. So I just had a conversation to say, do we want to put something together to have a formal contract to request that payment?
What do you guys think?
Have we had any more conversations with the town manager or?
No, we sent the contract back at the ninety-five thousand, and I haven't heard a new paper from you.
Mr. Cherry, could we do any trading with them? If they're going to charge yet?
Yeah. We probably can, yeah.
I'm all for putting it in a contract. I remember way back when, E-911 system came to our county. Before that, everybody just called a regular phone number if you wanted an ambulance or fire to report something to the sheriff's office. And the sheriff's office had most of the dispatch in at that time. And so it was pretty much a verbal agreement, the way I remember it, you know? And the town did obligate that verbally, they played for one dispatcher, because it was easier for the county to do the E-911 system than it was for the county to have one and the city to have one. You only had one system and operated for that one system. So I think that it should be put into a contract. And that, that's just what I believe about it, even though, you know, they seem different because they're in the county too. But they also have a separate law enforcement, a separate fire department, and a separate water system people. You know, when something happens to the water system and somebody calls and reports that, they dispatch them too to go out and fix a water line, whatever is going on. So I think that it's equally important. We don't have a water system or sewer system. I think that's something that we got to think about for the future of our county, because people need those services. Other than that, I feel like it'd be best in a contract form.
I'm all for the contract, because I think it puts us on the same page, and a lot of times, we're not on the same page with the town. Because somebody asked, or somebody said, yeah, let's do this, and we never kind of put it in right. Verbal contract's good until you just have a dispute with it. Then it's.
Seems to be. It's really happened. It's, it's been handled ever since it started this way until our last meeting.
I think it would be wise to look into trade services.
And we could put some of that into that contract, as far as.
Anything to save us a little money.
Yeah.
I, I, I agree with needing a contract. I also feel remorseful that we have to do that, that, that just the verbal agreement is not strong enough. But I guess to protect us, them, and everything, you need, we need to go ahead and enter into a contract. So I, I agree with it.
I believe we ought to have a contract, but I still believe it'd be good, maybe you could swap out.
I think contracts are good, because again, like I said, it, it kind of puts things, everybody on the same page. It's my business, I do contracts with people a lot of time. It's not just because I'm saying I'm holding you live or you're holding me live, I'm saying this is what we're doing. So nobody has an argument against us. I think we pursue that contract, and we can talk about the benefits or the contractual savings of swapping some things out. Next up is review officers' resolution.
So we did do this a few months ago. We had removed a few people and changed it. The person that we added on has left. So there was a, a time that they needed somebody, and you know, the person that needed to do it was on. So I told Cindy we'd go ahead and back up to change it back to the way it was, it adds. So it will be Ruth Ann, Jessica Danner, Dawn Zalba, Beverly and Kim Dotsey, all allowed to be the review officers. So it removes David Green, who was the one that was added on, and puts Beverly back in there.
Any questions on that? We just bring it back up in the next meeting, we'll vote on it. Next, county manager's report.
I don't have anything too specific. Cindy did give the appointment nominations for the boards, the opening. So the first column is obviously the boards, the second column are their terms. And then if there's been anything turned in for those boards, the people that are turned in have listed. There are some reappointments that are required, the JCPC reappointments are required. The library was a request of the library to let parent doctor remain on land. The nursing home board has no one.
The nursing home board has no one. The requirements for that board has, have gotten very specific, you have thirty-six hours of training. So, most people are just not really interested in doing that. So, we have no, no one for that. And then, as you see, TDA as well. And where it's blanked, there's been no one turned in forms of interest.
On TDA's, well, we will have to elect a chairman for that. Because right now, they're just running a temporary chair till, till this lives.
Good, Kevin. I'm preparing a packet for y'all to have back up documentation, including people's application nomination forms and such. And just to, to let y'all know, there was an application for TDA. I received that, it's with the CTE program at the high school. And it will be up to you all according to the resolution that states, the way that it says is a little, um, well, understandable, I guess. There was a question from Barbara about that because of her position in CTE, working with the businesses and working with students to become part of the businesses in the area and such. She felt she would qualify, and we were more along the lines of if you have, like, been reckless or if you had retail business or had business that brought an occupancy tax, that that's what qualified you to become an applicant for that commission. So, you will see that in your packet, so that's your, your decision.
So, these will come up and we'll have to, this is going to be voted on the next meeting, right?
And it's much, I'd also, if you think of someone that might be interested to serve in one of those slots, you know, we put it in the paper. We put it on a Facebook page, we put it over on the website, and we have some of that packet, but there's still some vacancies that we have no, no one in there. Wish it all set and loaded, if somebody can give them a chance to in it, if they might have all those positions.
Thanks.
And there are a few extra on the heritage board. There was an extra person. So, Cindy just went straight across. If there was a, a term expiring, if there was someone had turned in, they're going to get it in. And then if you've got one extra with a blank on the term expires in the middle column, that's just, we had an extra person. So, that'll have to be decided where, you know, if we're putting that person in somewhere else.
Got anything else?
Commissioner's report. Roger will start.
Mr. Chairman, I guess since we last reported on Monday, May thirteenth, I, I've been attending at ten o'clock the online meetings with the Marianna Black Library. And then that, later on that evening, of course, we had the budget work session. On Thursday, May eleventh, at six o'clock, I had a four-square meeting at Andrews. Monday, May twentieth, we attended a public ed meeting at four o'clock at the fellowship hall of the Methodist Church. Went over the Leandro case, and that was educational. I think that that case was actually, I think I was on the board of education possibly when that first came about, and sort of lost track of where it was. But it's a, it's a very interesting case in which, if it had gone through and not met resistance from the legislation, legislators and we would have somewhere in the neighborhood, it's been estimated about five point four million dollars coming into Swan County for public education, which would be, sure would make our budgeting and their budgeting a whole lot simpler. But it's, it's met resistance and it's just not working. Talked about that. Thursday, May twenty-eighth, again, I had a, every other week, they have the online meeting with the library. And I'd invite you guys to, to join in with that. And learn about their construction and their, you know, their plans and the challenges they're facing as, as this moves along. A lot of it has to do with water, water sewer systems that we have. And, and our part in that, what's our part, their part, who's paying for what, just a lot of those questions that are, kind of right now, it's still remained unanswered a little bit. But we got to get to some answers so they can get those, those projects on, on the move. Then later on that evening, I had a RPO meeting and a commission meeting at five and six-thirty at the Borough Building up at Southwestern. Then on Wednesday, May twenty-ninth, Mr. Chairman, you and I joined, attended the ten o'clock a joint meeting up at Jackson County with the, about the Fontana Regional Library meeting. And you may want to go into that later, but I guess that's, that's my report.
That's all a lot of room this month. Again, there's monies available for people who have property, want to start a small farm of some sort. There's monies available for fencing, that will pay at least half of what it costs to put up a good fence. So, getting farmers need to do fencing, or they have contact soil and water, of course. We have seeders that will run out, have some equipment, sell silk fence and posts and stuff to do to stop soil erosion. All of that stuff's available through soil and water. And then also to talk about the ag fair coming up in August. A lot going on with that, and it's, it's going to be a better fair this year because we're doing Friday evening and Saturday evening, however it is, sort of a conflict with a home football game. But anyway, the Friday night, they're going to have a special again at the event park. And then it'll be all day on Saturday. Have that date, it's the latter part of the month, it's when the fair's going on. I was pleased to hear too, that at the event park, July the fourth, fifth, and sixth, we'll be singing in the Smokies again. And it's the inspiration's sixtieth year. And I feel like as a county government, we should come up with something black or something to sort of honor those guys because of what they do and have done for sixty years, which is bring people into our area for tourism and also promoted Christian gospel music. And I think we should, we should come up with a black show for that for a presentation for them. Again, July fourth, fifth, and sixth, the Swan County Event Park. Since the county's been, or, excuse me, I guess it's Greg Smoky Mountains Event Park, is that correct? The correct name? Anyway. So, anyway, just wanted to put that plug in and let us think about that because it's not long until, until July. They have been promoting Christian values and things that are important to our area for sixty years, and I think that's a great accomplishment.
Thank you, sir. So, Roger and I did attend the FRL, Fontana Regional Library, getting a meeting in, in Jackson County with Jackson County, Macon County, several, couple lawyers, and looking over the agreement that Macon County had proposed. And so, we came back with some revised, the revised agreement, which I think Jackson County lawyers kind of put together, working on. So, we're not, we're not, we're on our way, but we're not there. So, trying to figure it out. So, we'll give more update as we know.
Well, the discussion was to make sure if we want, the, the question that arose at the end that we need to decide was right now the agreement is between Swan, Jackson, Macon, and Fontana Regional Library. The Jackson County attorney's question was, do you want Fontana Regional Library to remain as a party to the contract? So, Macon, when they changed their contract, they put it in as a three-party contract with just the counties, leaving out the library. So, what happens is Jackson County's concerned that they're not a contract at that point if you do not have Fontana Regional Library as a party to the contract. So, Jackson and Macon both agreed to leave them as a party, and we just had to say yes to remove to that as well. So, and then he's going to finish up that contract to get us hopefully, what will be the final thing?
So, we'll probably bring that back up in our next meeting. Like I've been to TDA meetings and I've met Laughtie several times a week, discussing distant in-house issues that we've had, so. Ken?
I have no.
Yes. Informal discussion. I do have informal discussions, I just got to that. I just skimmed over this. It's from North Carolina floodplain mapping program back in two thousand sixteen. I think I met with these FEMA representatives. So, they originally done our floodplain study back in two thousand ten, had new maps, two thousand ten floodplain study within Swan County. There's areas that they've done a full detailed study, and there's areas that they've done a limited detailed study. Two thousand sixteen, I met with them because every five years, they're supposed to update this. Well, I met with them in Macon County. I went to Macon County, met with them. This is when I was in inspections department. And they asked, they're asking the counties, what do you want us to do next? And my, my, what I told them to do next was to come in and do these limited detail studies and finish what you started. Because limited detail study on the stream is way worse than a full detail study, my experience with floodplain. So, what they're saying now is, and at that time, they were supposed to do it, but then they ran out of money. State ran out of money, isn't that weird? But they, now they're proposing to come back in, and I don't know exactly, I just skimmed through this and I just got it. But they're proposing to come back then and reevaluate or relook at some of these models on Alarga Creek, Tennessee River, Nana Hallett River, O'Connell and Lefty River, Ravenfort, Shepherd's Creek, Two Hollow Branch, two different places on Two Dollar Branch, and has the length of miles that they're going to do, has the study. So, they are going to go back and detail study these limited detail studies. So, this, well, will help, it should help. It may not, but it should help with floodway, non-encroachment areas. I don't know. But we have until June the twenty-eighth to submit any comments that we would like about these studies. I'll let, I'll get this to you somehow. I'll just might scan it in, email it to you. That's coming up, so I guess.
Mr. Chairman, so that's the floodplain studies, and that means that if they go back and redo the limited ones, then they're going to expand the floodplain, correct, is what?
I'm hoping they won't. It shouldn't, but it could. So, the limited detail studies, on a detailed study, which is like, detailed studies are like, Deep Creek is detailed study, Tucker City River is detailed study. Just a few are detailed. And what they do is, it's kind of hard to explain, but they're trying to find out where the floodway is, which is the area that you can't really do anything in without a, no rust. On a detailed study, they do, they do encroachment like this, and whenever this water here rises one foot, they stop it and they call that the floodway. On a limited detail study, they do seven tenths of a foot, which when it rises, which spreads it out further. So, in a, like in a, in a valley, it's not as bad, but in a field, it's going to get wider in a limited details. So, hopefully this would narrow it out. So, like in Alarga Fields and Alarga, that floodplain goes all the way across that field.
So, it might shorten it up?
It should, yeah.
My worries only those. We, we done had the issue with the floodplain and the elderly person up Deep Creek who was in the floodplain and needed to modify her home to have wheelchair accessibility. And as far as I know, she wasn't allowed to because of the floodplain stuff, and it costs so much to do floodplain studies. So, I, I'm not, I mean, I would love for them to restrict it down in some places and not require certain things that they're requiring because it, it doesn't always help everybody. Because she was told she had to get an engineered floodplain study done. It was going to cost a lot of money. And all she needed was to fix her bedroom to where she could access it with a wheelchair.
Yeah.
And so, it's not always a good thing. I don't necessarily understand exactly why we're involved in it. I know the man that came and spoke, spoke to us when I questioned it before, said that pretty much told us, if we didn't do this stuff, FEMA would not come and help us out if there was a bad flood. And I don't understand that because any taxpayer pays taxes should get help from FEMA.
It's all insurance driven.
That's right. And it provides insurance for certain people.
Yeah. And if you got a loan at the bank, they might give you flood insurance for the floodplains.
It helps some people, and then the, and the other issue also was if existing homes are damaged or something by the floodplain. I thought that there was an issue where you could only build the same thing right back on the same footprint.
You can, yeah.
And so, it's not all as good as everybody thinks it is. I, I don't believe, that's my opinion. But I, I would definitely not want them to expand the floodplain on things. I don't even understand some of the places that they had on Alarga, there's certain places I didn't understand why they, it was in, which I guess that's what you're saying was a limited study.
Limited study.
But.
I ran that to it all file.
I think we definitely need to not let it overreach and.
Like I said, I'll send all this to you. There's actually a website on here. You can get on here to view the studies in your community. You can, you can get on here and look at some of these. And then there's contact information on there as well.
Because if they start expanding, it's going to start restricting even more.
Yeah.
You're going to have to follow all these rules.
I'm hoping it, like I said, I hope it decreases. Just letting, giving that information, I'll get that to you and scan this. Public comment.
I got one more thing to discuss, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
Are, are, are we ready to run the county manager's job? Are we ready to?
I, I think we are, honestly. Didn't we talk?
I see it's in some of the boxes for, from the NCAA, Jack Horton, who did the ad for Graham County. They're willing to work with us and do an ad to put something together for us. And he was just trying to get, there was like little questionnaires about, you know, things that you found important and that sort of thing. So, that's, he was wanting those to get some information to put into that ad.
As soon as we get the information, we'll put it in.
I've heard that the last, I mean, to be fair, we need to advertise his job.
Yeah.
You know, you got, you got to have, I, I know some people that would like to put in for it. But we, we've heard that you have to do this, that, and the other. It's, it's our job in our county. It looks like we could just advertise it if we're going to and if we're not going to, so we ain't going about it.
I mean, we can. We're just trying to follow some of the NCAA, some of their guidelines. But let's get it advertised. I'll find the book, I'll find the book. And public comment. When you're coming up, public comment, please state your name and your address. You have five minutes to speak, no more. You'll be addressing the board as a whole and not any individual. The board will not make comments or answer any questions at this time. This is a time for your public concerns. No time shall be shared by any individual. Mr. Bruce Coggins, please come up.
Good morning. My name is Bruce Coggins. I live at two-twenty Ridge Top Drive. I've spoken to you gentlemen before and expressed my disappointment with the lack of progress on the animal shelter. This morning, I'm here to express my encouragement because I've been following the progress of the construction that's going on, and I can see that shelter becoming a reality. So, I've been to other meetings and listened to people express mostly complaints and criticism. So, today I thought I'd mix it up a little bit and come here to say thank you for the work you guys are doing on that shelter and to let you know that if there's an opportunity for resident. for resident participation as a volunteer for the ongoing operation of that facility, I've got my hand up. So once again, gents, thanks for the follow-up. I don't know if my comments made any difference, but that's immaterial. Fact is that the building's ongoing and brings a smile to my face. So, thank you.
Thanks, sir. That's the end of public comment, at this time, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion.
Yes, sir. All the favoriters right here. Passing that. Thank you, gentlemen.